I thought you were so far.
Glad you're still there.
But the roll call wasn't on camera? Because if you were ever there, you'd probably lie out of camera.
And then you're gonna maybe walk back.
Good.
Picture.
This is some junkie dog.
Is it?
Yeah.
Tie it off here.
Right on the bottom of it. You were at the bottom. I'm gonna start in a minute when we get something. Yeah. Jay will be here soon. He's just probably around a minute later or something.
Well, we brought you here just to go.
Oh, he'll be walking up that way, Jay. I know. Good, okay. He said you are not gonna get a chip at the time, ninety's crap. So just... I'm not scared. I'm gonna call the meeting to order, and can you do roll call for me?
Sure.
Um, Mindy?
Yes.
Walt?
Yes.
Brent?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Craig?
Just making sure it's recording.
Okay, so Craig? Not here. Okay. Unless he's late, but he's not here yet. So let's stand and do a pledge of allegiance and a prayer. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. To Heavenly Fathers of Kent this evening, we just ask that you be with us through this meeting and help us make the best decisions for the town of Kirkland and guide and direct us on our way home this evening. In your name we pray. Amen. In our packet, council members, we have last month's meeting minutes from September the eighth. Was there any changes or corrections? Would anyone want to entertain a motion?
I don't want to entertain a motion.
Okay, Walt has a motion, and Jerry second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Um, under our new business tonight, Renee Crake is going to present additional information for Central Dispatch for us. And she's put a folder on your table in front of you tonight, so.
Yeah.
Did I give you, do you have a copy, Jay?
Uh, no. Thanks. You should have. Another one would be here. But thank you.
Well, good evening. I am Director of Clinton County Central Dispatch. Also, with me today is our Assistant Director, Chris Lardo. So I'm going to, in your packet, I printed out our PowerPoint instead of, since we didn't have anything, to put it up on the wall in here. So I printed a PowerPoint, and I'll go through that with you. Also in your packet is a copy of the last agreement that the county had from 2014, that the board signed. And then also in there are just some information. I've left some extras with Mindy for the town, some pamphlets and different things that you can hand out to anybody in the community and has information about dispatch and what to expect when you call 911 and texting and NICSOL. So I will go ahead and get started. I know some of you are familiar, some are not. So on that first page, the history of the interlocal agreement. The county decided to adopt, back then it was called the Public Safety LOIT, and it was brand-new money for everybody. And the county decided to enact this Public Safety LOIT tax in order to build Central Dispatch. So prior to 2009, we had three dispatch centers. We had Frankfurt Police, Clinton County Sheriff, and Frankfurt Fire. And as you can imagine, transferring calls, seconds count, minutes count. And when we had a committee prior to 2009, everybody decided, we need to consolidate our dispatch centers. And so to be able to fund that, the county adopted the Public Safety LOIT tax. And so that was new money for everybody. And just as a refresher on that first page, so 100% of everybody's LOIT the first year went to fund Central Dispatch, so that we could build the dispatch center. In 2010, it went to 75%, and 2011, 60%. And then in 2015, there was a second agreement assigned, and that was at a distribution of 50% from 2015 through 2019. And that agreement automatically renewed unless someone gave written notice to terminate. Currently, the LIT tax, it's now known as the LIT, the rate is at 2.65% and dispatch receives 25% of the Public Safety LIT. And if you see the next several pages, I just did year by year. So we started with 2017. I'll just give you a quick, 2017 Kirkland's portion was $13,869. And of that percentage was 50% at that time, was $6,934 is what went to fund Central Dispatch. And so if you just continue to go on through, we did a breakdown for each year. If you go on to 2023, as an example, I did want to point out, so the last few years, as you know, there has been a special distribution. You get your monthly distribution from the county. The county receives the money from the state, and then they issue each month the amount that you are to get, your percentage. The last few years, the state has given a special distribution as well. You will see in 23, the total distribution for Kirkland was $36,539. So your portion was $27,404. And then the portion that went to Central Dispatch was $9,134. And then below that is the breakdown. And you will see down below then, a special LIT. So there were two years, 23 and 24. If you see below, Kirkland received their special distribution was $3,745, was what you would have received prior to Dispatch getting our amount. There was a, an error with how it was calculated in 23 and 24, and you actually got more. You didn't, we didn't take more than what we were supposed to. But you will see, we only received $936.25. So in 23 and 24, and I double-checked with the auditor's office, there was an error in their formulas when it was calculated. So, and that was only on the special distribution for 23 and 24. So we should have received $936.25, but we only received $501 in 23. And that happened again in 24. So, and then in 25, so your total distributions, $37,333 is the total amount going to the county for Kirkland. And then they distribute out $27,999.72. So that's your amount you will have this year. And of that portion, 25% of the total, we received $9,333.28. So moving on, does anybody have any questions? Like I said, I didn't want to, I don't think you need me to tell you every, every year what our, what the distributions are, but I did want to put it out in front of you for that. And you can always get those from the auditor's office as well if you have any questions about anything. That's where I got my numbers from. So then I just wanted to move on in kind of a past and present. So prior to Central Dispatch, like I said earlier, we had three dispatch centers. So for those of you that live in Kirkland, if you called 911 today, Jerry, back in, prior to Central Dispatch, if you called 911 from your house on North Main Street and you needed fire EMS, your call went to the sheriff's office because you lived in the county. All 911 calls in the county went to the sheriff's department. If people lived in the city of Frankfurt, those 911 calls went to Frankfurt Police. And if you needed an ambulance or the fire department, they would have to tell you, stay on the line while we transfer your call. And then that call would be transferred to the fire department, and then they took care of dispatching fire and EMS. So obviously, prior to Central Dispatch, that minutes, seconds, all count. Hi, good evening.
Sorry for being late, everybody.
No, you are fine, you are fine. So we had a lot of delay in dispatching of calls because of the time delay of transferring. We had lack of interoperability with our radios. I'm sure Shane was around prior to then. He could tell you interoperability between other agencies and communications on our radios. They just, it was, everybody was on a different channel. We just couldn't communicate.
Remember, Byron had to tell us about it.
Yes, it was really, it was really rough, you know, prior to Central Dispatch. Many times, minimal staffing. Police Department, we might have one. Sheriff's Department might have one or two dispatchers on, and the fire department always only had one person. They were, and they worked 24-hour shifts. So they would have to wake up to answer the phone. And so we don't do that anymore, needless to say. There also was no call handling equipment. After Central Dispatch, we consolidated to one dispatch center. It was built in the lower level of the sheriff's office. And we had, at the time, when we built the dispatch center, we had four positions, so we had four dispatchers on a shift. They all worked seven to seven, and they still work seven to seven. And we would work a minimum of three dispatchers on a shift. So one person could be off on vacation or, or holiday. We no longer have to transfer those calls. So if Chris and I would happen to be working the desk, we are trained, everybody is trained. Police, fire, EMS, no matter what the call is, and we answer 911, we can immediately handle that call. And we don't have to transfer those calls anymore. We can immediately start dispatching. If it's an accident, we can dispatch here in Kirkland. We dispatch everybody at the same time, police, fire, EMS. They all get the same dispatch at the same time. And then we continue on, fire EMS. We'll go to their channel, and the dispatcher that's taking care of fire that day will handle their traffic. And then if Brendan is on, or the Kirkland Marshal is on, or the sheriff's office, then the other dispatcher will take care of the radio traffic on that after the call is first dispatched. The delay, we no longer have those delays. Many times, if Chris answers the phone and I listen, and I hear what the call is, it could be a chest pain. It could be a chest pain here in Kirkland as an example. He adds the call in the computer system, we can all see the computers. As soon as he adds that address and I hear that it might be a 55-year-old male experiencing chest pains, he can continue to stay on the phone and ask important questions and continue on, I will dispatch that call. Or one of our other dispatchers will dispatch that call. There's no delay. Once we get the vital information, we immediately start dispatching, whether the call is police, fire, EMS. The interoperability between agencies, and that's police, fire, EMS on radios. You guys just went to Hamilton County, correct? So we dispatched them. Hamilton County contacted us for the house fire that was in Hamilton County. Was it last night?
Oh, Boone County.
That wasn't Boone County.
Boone County. Okay. So.
Yeah, Boone County contacts Hamilton for Sheriff, and then kicked back to us for we lit.
So then, so then they contact us, so then we dispatch Kirkland. So I believe on that, so we dispatched them. But then we also give them an ops channel on Hamilton County. So they can immediately communicate with those on the scene. They were going to Hamilton County. They can still contact us, and we can still talk to them. But they can also talk to the on-scene command in Hamilton County for that fire and know exactly where they need to go and what is needed. We couldn't do that before. We could not do that before, and that's very vital for all of us. Not only dispatch, but police, fire, EMS across the board. Interoperability and being able to communicate, whether it's regionally, locally, it's very important that we are able to do that. Like I said, we are all cross-trained, police, fire, and EMS. We are certified. We are certified EMD, which is Emergency Medical Dispatching. That allows us to give pre-arrival instructions. Unfortunately, like I said about chest pain, many times we have to give CPR instructions. And we are able to do that. And we have great people, and they're all trained. And, you know, those are calls that nobody wants to take, and it takes special people to be a dispatcher. And we have a great group of people. But they're EMD certified, like I said. We are fire certified, and we are law certified. Also, after Central Dispatch, we started utilizing NICSOL for mass notifications. And that's one of the papers that is in your folder. I was telling Mindy prior to the meeting, if we had a road closure due to an accident or road construction, we sent one out the other day for Kelly Road. It's going to be closed this week. We send that out, and people can, it's free service. Anybody just have to download the Everbridge app, and we send those out automatically when we have that information. We are also responsible for activating the tornado sirens. We also do the monthly test, the first Saturday of each month. So I'm sure if you hear it, at 11 o'clock on the first Saturday, that is us doing our 32nd test. And then we also will do a roll call with all of our fire departments. So if someone from Kirkland, we will ask if it activated. And if it did not, then we take care of notifying EMA, who takes care of the maintenance on the tornado sirens. So, but we do activate the sirens during a tornado storm. And we do test them to make sure that, we want them to work when they, when they're needed. So on the next page, how are the LIT funds utilized? So I said earlier, we built the dispatch center in 2010, and we opened in 2011. And we pay for all the salary benefits, including medical, dental, and vision. Central Dispatch does not get any money out of County General. So we are self-sufficient. So all of that, the LIT money, and then our 911 fees that we receive, all fund Central Dispatch, nothing comes from County General. Our radio equipment that is utilized in Dispatch, we started with new radios. And then, as you can imagine, as radios get to end of life, then it's time to replace, and we've replaced the radios. And we added two backup dispatch positions at the Frankfurt Police Department. If we would ever have to evacuate the sheriff's office in an emergency, something happened in the building, we can go to the police department, and we have two positions that we can automatically sit down and immediately start dispatching out of. Our 911 administrative phone system, we utilize in digital is our 911 provider. And so we have gone through one round of phones and computers. And we recently, I think a couple of years ago, on the next page, it'll tell you what year we updated those. But we had to update those and keep up with technology. We also purchased Amivo To Go Kit. And what that is, are four portable phones. They're inside a large case that we are able, if we have to evacuate the sheriff's office, we can grab this case as well and take with us. We can have the calls transferred. Boone County is our backup, and they are ours for phones. So in the interim, until we can get set up, we would have all of our calls transferred, or 911 calls transferred to Boone County. We get this system set up, and we can immediately take back all of our 911 lines, as well as our administrative lines. So we have that, that we had purchased. As you can imagine, everything needs to be recorded. Everything that we do is recorded. And so one of that, we are in our third recorder since we've opened. And every telephone line, administrative, and 911s are all recorded, as well as every radio channel that we have. They're recorded. Power phone, total response, call handler. So when I told you we are certified as EMD, fire, and law, power phone, total response is also a protocol for us. So if we add a chest pain call into the computer, it will come up with questions for us that we should be asking and also helps us with instructions on what you might need to do. Whether it is CPR, maybe somebody has fallen and cut their arm, a fire. There's questions, if it's a hazardous materials incident or a gas leak, there are certain questions and instructions we should do. But it just gives us protocols, it helps us liability-wise, and it allows us to process calls, whether it's Chris answering the phone, or somebody else in dispatch, or me. We are basically handling the calls very similar to each other. I said, talked about NICSOL already. We also, with the LIT funds, Spillman software. I believe, Brendan, do you pay for software for law enforcement here? So your portion. We have a portion that Dispatch has to pay for ourselves, for our software, the police department, sheriff's office, everybody does that. We also, the last time, a server was purchased, the county purchased that for everybody. So we all share the Spillman server. So that is something that, and that's very, our, right now, we are in the process of having to replace the current server. And Chris, help me, a hundred thousand? Close to.
Sixty-eight thousand, I think, total, was the press.
So, you know, again, that's something else that the county has been doing, so the server, because we all use the same system. So that has been done. And also along with that, our IT takes care of all of that, so you don't have to fund any, anything like that. Crossroads GIS solutions for our CAD mapping. Our CAD mapping have been very outdated. And we went with this company a few years ago. And I can tell you, it is pretty outstanding. And it's important for our mapping to be correct. When we are in those vital calls and 911, when we add an address, I need to make sure that that address is a valid address and it comes up. You know, we may have some people, we have newer dispatchers that may do not live in Clinton County, not as familiar with, with the county. We need to make sure that we have accurate addresses, and it is outstanding. It's probably one of the best, best things as far as, like, purchases that we could have made on the fire side of things with, with Crossroads GIS. So the fire department has what's called box alarms. So if they go on a house fire and they need additional tankers, or they may have a newer fireman, and he doesn't know, he just knows that he needs help. He can say, I need the second alarm. We used to have to get a book out, flip through, find the area, find, and see exactly who. Crossroads has taken all of our box alarms from every fire department in Clinton County that we dispatched for, and they are automatically, within seconds. We can click on our map, we can right-click, and it will take us to if it's a structure fire. So within seconds, where before it could have been minutes, you know, going through the books, trying to find the right box alarm. We remodeled in 24. We've remodeled the dispatch center. And we also added a fifth position. So as you can imagine, everybody's getting busier. And we also needed to stay up with, with the times. We currently have our five dispatch positions. We had increased our budget to add four dispatchers. So we had always had 16. We had three dispatchers on a shift and one shift supervisor. And then I was the director, and then a few years ago, we added the assistant director's position. We added, so that we could go to 20. So we would have four dispatchers on a shift, plus the one supervisor. We're currently at 18. And we feel like we're pretty good. We have 20 in our budget. But we have our last two that are in training right now, and we're gonna see how it goes. You know, we, it gives us a little extra cushion. You know, we're not in dire streets. We went through some rough patches where we had people, you know, sometimes people, this is not for them. Dispatching is not for the weak, you know? It's, it's a rough job, and it takes special people. You know, and some people want to work Monday through Friday and things. And so we had a really rough time. And then in 24, when Chris joined us as Assistant Director, we kind of started reevaluating things. We have, on the next page, if you want to go to some of our improvements. In 24, we started, we decided to revamp our hiring process. You know, we need to get some good candidates first. And so we revamped our hiring process, our training program. And we are also doing quality assurance. So Chris does our quality assurance for us, so we can make sure that the calls are being handled as we need them to be, that we're following the protocols, that we are documenting everything as they should be. Last year, we also applied for our first grant. And with that grant, we asked for 10 portable radios and two laptops, so that in the event we needed to leave our building, not only at the police department, we have the two positions, but we will have also portable radios, much like what Brendan carries on him. We will have those as well. If Kirkland had an incident out here where we needed to come out, if we were, let's say, a tower was taken down, we could still work on tact channels, but we would have to be in close proximity with you. So we could come out and do those. So we did receive that grant last year, and we were pretty excited about that. You can see over the years, I just kind of gave you a brief. In 23, the Senate Bill 158 was passed for training standards for Dispatch. So we already had met all of those requirements, and we were already kind of ahead of the ballgame with those. But every year, we have to report to the state. And one of those is making sure all of our staff has the appropriate training that they are to have. And then after that page, I just gave you some screenshots. So this page here is what our radio looks like when we're sitting in front of it. Computer screen, we have six, are six monitors in front of us? Six or five? Seven?
Eight, seven.
Seven? So the radio is one of them, and that is how we talk to all police, fire, and EMS. The next one, the power phone call handler. So again, like I said, we enter a chest pain call or a breathing call. Those protocols come up, and that's just a screenshot of kind of what it looks like for us. All of those are integrated into our Spillmans. All the questions that we ask and answer, those automatically get pushed into Spillman. So Brendan, if it's a burglary report or any call, he can see those call notes that we type in, as well as the questions that we answer and ask of people. I'm kind of going quickly, but I don't, I want to just get through it for you. And one of the things that we've added is called Rapid SOS. And Rapid SOS is a free service that we have signed up to utilize. So if you lived in Kirkland before and your cell phone would tremulate off of the cell tower, I think you have one, what, just south of town here? So you actually may have, you could, in this area, probably hit us. You could also hit Boone County, or you could probably also hit Hamilton County, just depending on where it's at. And it takes the information from the phone to the cell tower. Rapid SOS takes it from the location services on your phone. And it has been pretty incredible for us. We still verify every time, we verify where people are. But this is just another vital tool for us to be able to utilize, to know where people are.
So if I called, it would say that I was at the town hall?
It would show, like, it would put a green dot. So I know it's kind of hard to see. If you look here, so on this Rapid SOS sheet here, if you see the green dots?
Yeah.
So this one was, was an intoxicated person that was called in. It was on 39 South, and they were coming north on 39.
Oh, wow.
And as the caller was reporting, we were dispatching and staying on. And then they turned off, I think maybe that's on Reagan Road.
Okay.
So like on 650 South. So they turned and went west, and then they came up. So it will, we, yes, it will track. Where the old system, we had to constantly refresh the system, and sometimes it just was not, it was, it was old, you know? And we still have that. But my thing is, it's just incredible how much has changed from 2009. I started dispatching in 90, so I started with a typewriter. So I'm, I'm that old, so I've been around a while. If you look at that next page, the example case, I know it's kind of hard to see. And if anybody's familiar with the area of 250 North and 250 East, South of County, I was actually working the desk one day. And 911 rang, and I heard something, and nobody was responding to me. And literally, if you see where that green is, it is out in the middle of a field, out in an open area. And just gut instinct or whatever, I just felt like, something's off. They didn't answer. I went ahead and added a call and asked the officers. I told them where it was showing, plotting. You know, clearly, it was like quarter mile off, it was ways off the road, way off the road. They get out there, the person had crashed. They'd actually gone off the road, hit trees, like, they were way off the road. Nobody would have probably seen them for quite some time. So, you know, but it was just like, to me, that, just for me, being the one answering that call that day and seeing that, and it was spot on. I took a picture of it, and sent it to the officers out there. They're like, that's exactly where it was. So, you know, it, it's, it's really a vital tool that we use daily. So, and then the next is a couple of pictures of our remodel. So and then the next is a couple of pictures of our remodel. We're kind of like in a horseshoe, but we do have the five positions. We also have monitors up on the wall, we have cameras inside the courthouse in case there are ever any issues in the courthouse. We have cameras at Old Stoney, at Bridge Creek Park, TPA Park, the city police department. So it just gives us eyes into some of those buildings where there may be, you know, more people and then whenever there'd be an issue, it gives us, you know, eyes in there to take a look at things and see what's going on. But please, if you have any questions, feel free. I put in my closing thoughts, Central Dispatch is the hub of all public safety. And we couldn't do it without all of your help, the city, the county, the towns. Everybody plays a vital part in that. And having the funding to continue with Central Dispatch is so important. Somebody has to answer those calls. Somebody has to be able to dispatch Brendan to those calls, to Shane, to the fire department, to EMS. And we have to have good staff. They're trained well, we keep up on the training. It's just, it's a very vital piece of the puzzle, of a big puzzle. And I'm proud of the way Central Dispatch, how we handle things. And I'm having to answer any questions that you have. You know, I know, like I said, I've gone quickly and I wanted to make sure I had everybody have one of this. So, you know, maybe to go back and look at things.
Do you have any questions for Renee or any comments?
I can understand how tough that would be as a dispatcher, especially a younger person. I've actually had him hang up on me, argue with me. I called in several years ago out here at the curve. I said, there's a guy that didn't negotiate the curve ride and he crashed his motorcycle. Well, I need an address, sir. I said, these fields don't have addresses on them. Well, I need an address. I said, it's, I'm a quarter mile west of Dr. Bush's house. I don't know no Dr. Bush.
Right, but that's the thing, like you and I, you and I would know Dr. Bush and many people don't.
I told this young lady, I said, if you'll dispatch us that way, I'm sure an officer knows where Dr. Bush lives. I said, tell him from Frankfurt, tell him leave Antioch and head towards Kirkland. When they see an old white-haired old man standing beside a guy laying all skinned up, then nobody stops. They leave Kirkland, tell them head west, tell them the same thing. She'd like it. And then one lady said, what phone number are you calling from? I said, you don't need to tell me you don't know my phone number. If I hang up, you're gonna call me right back. I said, look on your screen or something.
We always, Gary, we always verify. One of the things, if you call 911, 911, where is your emergency? Even if it's showing where you're at, we are going to verify that address. We're also gonna verify your phone number. We have to do that. That's our protocols that we follow. Sometimes it isn't, sometimes it isn't, depending on whether you called 911 or an app at one.
I told this lady, I said, this is different. I called where there was a tree down in the road and it was still dark. She said, well, what's your phone number? I said, look on your screen. Well, I'm supposed to ask you that? I said, well, if you already see it and you know I'm talking to you, you know what number I'm calling from? She finally hung up. Well, whatever. I said, the question like that, when you call in and your, the adrenaline's kinda up anyway, you see something wrong, then they start quizzing you about stuff and you're not thinking they're gonna hit a button and somebody's already been dispatched. You think, why do you ask me all these stupid questions when it's somebody wrong?
Because it is important for us to ask those questions. Because they need to know if somebody has been trapped in a vehicle. We will continue to ask questions, even though we're not holding up the dispatch. And we should be telling you, my partner's dispatching the ambulance or the fire department, I'm gonna stay on the phone and continue to ask you questions. Because there's information, if it's a fight or domestic, Brendan needs to know if there's weapons involved, things like that. So there's lots of questions that it's important for us to ask. And it's important because it's for their safety and not only your safety as well.
I know everything goes into data, I know that. But she, well, what's your birthday? What's my birthday? I called them because there's a tree in the middle of the road.
You have a surname, Jerry, as well, correct?
That's what she said. She said, there's two Jerry Fosses in this county. I said, no, there isn't, there's three.
So but we, those are the things that we ask. And those are important things because also there could be like a, I don't know, I'm just gonna say Tom Smith. How many Tom Smiths do you think we have? You don't wanna be mixed up with the wrong one. You know, we want to make sure we have the correct one when we ask those things. So those are very important questions that we ask, so that we have the correct information for, you know, whether, please, yes.
That's the lady hung up on me. She didn't take any questions.
I might have benefited by the ties on the call, so that person, I do previous calls or what matter around the finish here before.
If I see something wrong, I call somebody, you know? And do you want it known that you've called in so many times over the years? What makes a difference?
But we don't give that information out. But it's important for, you know, if it's a domestic, you know, they wanna know. Because we have new officers all the time and they may not know these people. And so like, you know, we can look and say, we were just there a day shift or two days ago, they were there on a domestic and now we're going back again.
And I had a man hang up on me several years ago, I told you about that. I called in, we are this morning, I said, sir, there's a house on fire at 500 block of North Pike. Oh, sir, thank you for calling, but there, that's already been called in, it's 500 block of West Pike. I said, please don't hang up. I ain't asking you, I'm telling you, there is no West Pike. It's 500 block of North Pike. I know it is, I own the house next door to it. And he hung up on me. And then I'm hearing fire trucks all around. And the guy, Doug O'Connor, his son-in-law or nephew comes over and he said, well, Jerry, where's your fire trucks at? There's a fire. And you can hear fire trucks all around. I thought, well, surely Kirkland guys will know. And I know what they did, they looked up to Google and comes in from the east and stops there at the church and then Jefferson Street. They's calling Jefferson Street, West Pike. I said, hey, they know West Pike. Well, he wanted to argue and he hung up on me and well, whatever. One guy shows up, finally, from Hillsburg or Kipton or something, and he was drunk, staggered up there. And I said, bud, there's nobody home, there's nobody in there. That guy's a single guy, he's in Florida right now, I don't want you to risk your life. He walks around real slow. I thought, well, that's a good idea, turn the propane tank off. After they left, I went, he didn't even have it half turned off. And then I told the boys that they got their chainsaw out, cut hole in the roof. I said, you need to fire that thing up. Oh, it always starts up. Then another truck shows up and they did the same thing. Finally, one got their chainsaw started and had it make sure it go start before they went up there. But just, and I realized, volunteer, you're out handling some beers down, you go lay down, you're gonna get a call in the middle of the night, you know? I thought that.
I'm very thankful for every single volunteer we have in Clinton County.
When I lived in Sheridan, I come in drunk in a skunk one night and I flopped down the bed, I was zero out. About that time, the siren went off. And I thought, man, I'm glad nobody's depending on me for safety, you know?
We couldn't do, we fire EMS without our volunteers. They're very vital. They are a very vital part of Clinton County.
Did anybody else have any questions for Renee or she?
Sorry, Renee, this seat at money, or PS Lowit, that used to go, are we paying what all the other towns are paying?
It's 25%.
I swear by street.
So the agreement, and the agreement still shows 50%, but it's been 25% for the last few years.
We need to have a new agreement? Do we need to have a new agreement?
Alan's not here tonight. So I'm sure, as you all know, with Senate Bill 1, everything's changing for all of us, every single one of us, the towns, dispatch, like everybody. So I don't know if we do. I mean, it would be for, what, a year? Because it's, Senate Bill starts in '27. So if I see Alan on the second, I mean, I think this, this agreement continues on unless somebody, just as it sunsets, it continues on unless somebody, you know, in writing.
Keep it rolling, hotel, they shut it off.
So yeah, it's at 25%. And I wish I knew why it was at 25, which is better for all of you, obviously. But yeah, this agreement is the only one that I had and it's the only one that the auditor had. Do you wanna add anything?
Jay, would you think a new agreement will be rolled up for that 2%?
I mean, I understand her concern that, that in a year or two, they may be, they might have to come back and ask for more money. But on the other hand, I do believe that your agreement should be what you're actually doing. And for that reason, I think it would be better to do a one or a two-year agreement and then, and then when we know how things shake out. Cause I also think there may be some changes to all that in the next.
There's, boy, it's, it's a lot of stuff. Yes, sure, sure. So that would be something that I would have to get with Alan and he was going to be here, I'm sure he's in the fields tonight. I should see him actually tomorrow at the council meeting, unless he's not there. So I will.
You can ask him if you want, cause Mary King's on, off, so.
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
Anyway, that's, that's my thought, is that, yes, it ought be changed, but I also understand why you don't wanna have a long-term change.
Yeah, cause then what's gonna happen?
Right, because I think, I think for all of us, everything's a big question mark of unknown, honestly. But do you have anything on the fire side of things or Brendan, for law side to add that Rapid SOS has been huge to do that location to our recording, so we can see all that. Power call questions to our phones, we see all that before we off the drive.
I think it's a really good point to like your concern when you're like trying to tell somebody where you're at. Rapid SOS is huge. Because before, with the triangulation, we might get a circle that's, it might be a mile wide over an area. And it's like, that's essentially useless trying to find where you're at. But with Rapid, it's pinpoint. I can see where you're walking around the house, right? Like if you flip over your vehicle and you're on the side of the road, I can see what side of the road you're on. So it is a huge advancement. And it, I think it will address a lot of concerns like that where you're like, I don't know how to tell you where I'm at, this is just where I am, right?
Address is, fails and.
Right. Well, as an example, you know, 10 miles of the interstate go through Clinton County. People do not know, they don't look at mile markers and all they can tell us is we are somewhere between Indianapolis and they may say Lafayette if we're lucky. Most of the time, it's Indianapolis and Chicago. They don't know. People don't know. For as great as technology is, I'm very, I know my directions, I know which way I'm headed, many people do not. And the advancement in technology made people not, because they put it in their phones or their cars, the navigation. And so they turn left and right and they have no idea where they're, they don't know their directions, which way they're headed. They rely on that. And so when you ask them, you know, are you headed west or east? I don't know. Okay, all right. So like if we're on 26, you know, okay, are you heading to Kokomo or are you heading to Lafayette? Oh, you're not heading to Lafayette, okay, you're westbound. You know, so those are the things that we have to ask people, you know, to figure out. So we're the Rapid SOS now, we usually.
Your way helps, yeah.
Yeah. And anytime, anybody, I put on there, Chris's email, my email, a lot of you have my number, call me anytime. Anytime you wanna stop down and see dispatch, give me a call. We'd love to have, we love to show it off. It's really, it's really impressive and we're glad to have it. And so anybody's welcome to come down anytime.
Okay. All right, thank you, Renee.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris, for coming.
Thank you.
Thanks for all the details.
I know, sorry I was ran away, I was wanting to get through it more. I know you still have a lot of meeting to do, so. All right.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, thank you.
We're gonna start with old business next. And our first item is our, we have to approve our 2026 budget. So we have an ordinance to pass for that. And Carlos got the ordinance to, for us to sign and everything. Would anyone wanna entertain a motion to pass our 2026 budget?
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion for the 26 budget.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion and a second by Brent.
Walt made the motion, I seconded it.
I'm sorry, put the motion, I'm sorry.
Uh, put the budget.
Yeah, put the motion, sorry.
Walt made a motion for the budget and then Brent second. And all those in favor of passing ordinance 2025-10-1, raise your right hand. And motion carries for the ordinance.
Can I, I apologize, can I interrupt for one minute? I forgot. So now I'm putting on my FEMA hat. If you didn't know, I am also now the FEMA director for Clinton County. And I'm gonna leave this, this is for the town. So every five years, it's required by FEMA that we have to do our multi-hazard mitigation plan and it has to be updated. And part of that requirement are two meetings, one is set in November and one is gonna be in January. And if any city, town, or county ever anticipates on wanting to get a FEMA grant for any multi-hazard, you have to participate. And it is just two meetings. So the first meeting is November 5th. And it's at the Frankfurt Police Department and I'm gonna leave this with you. And there are two papers that you can bring to that meeting and just one person needs to attend the meeting. Anybody can attend. And there's just some questions on there, answer them to the best of your ability. Some of them may be questions for like Billy, if he has certain things like with the water and things in here. If you have any questions, let me know. But I wanted to leave that today. So I apologize, that's why I had it in yellow, so I didn't forget.
What time is it?
Um, one o'clock. Yes, yes. And it'll be at the Frankfurt Police, yes, I'm sorry.
It'll be at 3:00.
No, I'll make sure we get that.
So yes, if you have any questions. All right, thank you, I apologize.
Thanks, Renee. Our next old business is our sanitary sewer rehabilitation project. We have a Commonwealth invoice in the amount of $4,110.94. And then we have a, another invoice, it was actually a pay app, in the amount of $136,855.22. So I make a motion that we pass both of these to approve for payment and sign.
I'll second.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. The next item on our agenda is the bridge and Dave Harness is here this evening and
Thank you. Last time we were here for the board, I believe, we wanted to break out, have meetings with some individuals from the, from the town council. And we met three times, once with Craig and Jerry, once with just Jerry, once with just Craig. And discussed the lease agreement, the construction and things like that, threw around some budget numbers. We've submitted the lease agreement, construction agreement, separated those two. And I understand that there have been some, we found over those documents quickly, made some revisions. So I just wanted to, to see what, any outstanding things might, there might be, any major hurdles, obstacles at this time, as well as we, we've been discussing the electrical upgrades for the park as part Uh, as well as, uh, we, we've been discussing the electrical upgrades for the park as part of the project. Um, it's, it's not something that's gonna be a deal breaker, but it's something that would delay our project. It certainly gets about fifteen percent of our entire, uh, build project is that, uh, increased to eight hundred amps, so.
I had some thoughts regarding this. First of all, there was a provision that said this is binding on all, on all future town council. You can't do that legally. As to, you could have a long-term lease, that is legal. What you can't do is say, we're going to commit the town council to accommodate, to, uh, to, uh, put in their budget in future years, payments. In other words, you can't make a, um, a binding agreement for the town council to pay certain expenses beyond this town council term. It's budget to budget.
Okay.
So, in other words, like, and the place where I saw probably the mo, was, you know, on the, uh, on some of the expenses and then it was, you know, and then, well, we'll agree later on how we're gonna allocate, uh, rental fees. What you could do is you could say, well, the lease could provide that the rental fees for that building always go to, and the town council has no obligation to pay for those other things. Now, that puts the bridge at more risk if you don't get the other rental fees. On the other hand, if you do get more rental fees than anticipated, you might come out ahead. But that, the town council could enter into a lease where you say, well, you know, you get the rental income from the building you built on our property. That could be done. For you to say, we're gonna pay the utilities in the future, that has to be appropriated each year, so that would be, you, you can't bind, there may be five different people, they're going, wait a minute, we never agreed to this. Well, the Indiana statue can say, you can't bind your, your, uh, your successors. So that, that was, there were some things also on the insurance. Uh, uh, I didn't have a problem with, with what you did, I, I just thought there was another thing you needed to do. You need to have, somebody needs to be responsible for the builder's risk insurance. Insurance was another area where you allocated that expense, I think, to the town. And again, that would be a problem of, it would have to be done each year, you can't say you could never change that.
Coverage, coverage of the building itself?
Yeah.
The town already takes care of the insurance for the buildings.
Well, and you could, you could have in the lease that you're going to, well, here's the problem is, is the town could say, we're not gonna insure this building anymore. I, I don't know that that would be very wise, but you know, the town isn't mandated necessarily to, to ensure every, every piece of property that it, that it owns necessarily. So that's an area also that could be, uh, addressed, it probably needs to be addressed somehow. And I, I'm not trying to shift expense to, I'm just trying to, uh, the other, oh, I, I do think that in the construction phase, somebody ought, somebody needs to have responsibility for, uh, for the insurance during the construction period. It's called builder's risk insurance. So we need to make, that way, you know.
We already have insurance, so I'm not sure that would be a problem for us to add that correctly.
Well, it'd be a totally separate policy.
But it's a different policy.
Right, but I, we can already ask for that, yeah.
This covers, you know, if the building gets damaged during construction. If, if they dropped off the furnace and somebody comes and steals it.
Yeah, correct, yeah.
Yeah, you know, all those kind of things.
Yeah.
Uh, vandalism, so you, somebody needs to have builder's risk insurance. I'm big on inspections, both during construction and, uh, in advance of construction. And, and this is, comes from my, my, I spent a lot of time representing a bank in, in construction land. Okay. And, and I have, and I, I can tell you, there's a church in this county that, that didn't like the idea of, of having to do the, or I think the loan officer actually didn't like the idea of having to ask the church to, to spend, and I think at that time it was fifteen hundred dollars, it may be more now. But, uh, and so they, there's an expert that, that looks at your plans and looks at, and, and he'll look at it as, first of all, is it, will it work? Second of all, can you do it for that price? You know, and then, in this case, the church found out that, no, there, there's a real problem. You can't build it that way, it's not gonna get, it's not gonna get, it's not gonna pass. So they went back and before they started the construction, they, they had to change their plans and solve it. And they came back later and said, thank you, we're really glad you asked us to do that. So I, I'm a, I, I do believe in that, it, it is, we'd have to find out how much it would be. The other thing you can do, and I think this is maybe less important, but you always have to worry about contractors getting ahead of you in terms of having request, they're giving you more, uh, bills than they've actually done work. And, uh, the same company that, that I, that, there's others, but this is one I know the most. They will, they go in and they look at it. And they say, yeah, this is done, this is done, this is done, this is done, yes, approve that draw. Or they say, you know, this isn't done, and by the way, that wasn't right, so you gotta change that. And so don't pay as much as they ask. So that's, uh, another service. That would be something probably not for the town to mandate. I guess it's more of a thing that I would suggest you consider.
And so you'll give us a name or a company for that because that is beyond the regular checks that we have to have going along?
Sure, yeah.
That someone has to come.
Yeah, I can tell you, uh, it, I can get, I can get you a name and a telephone number.
I know, but I'm sitting here from a standpoint knowing that Dave Harness is an engineer. And I think that between him and Bill, they're gonna be on top of that project checking.
And that may be, but I don't know what kind of engineering he does too. I mean, it's one thing to.
Geotechnical.
Geotechnics.
Is he in construction?
I am.
Okay, okay.
That's why I was like, I feel confident with.
Well, in that, in that very well, we, we, you don't need that.
I, I, we need it, I was just prepared to do it myself.
Okay.
Site prep, verification, uh, geotechnical if required.
Yeah.
We know that there's various.
Right.
School out there, uh, and then Shaw's, uh, our company worked with, uh, First Indiana Construction for years. They, that's all they do is.
That's who I was talking about.
Yeah.
Rob French?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We used to be with, uh, the company I was with, so.
Okay, okay.
So, no, I appreciate those are all great points and things that, because you're right, you can really put a lot of, uh, stress on the, on the budget if you don't prepare and you get caught sideways.
Yeah.
Are you gonna make changes to those documents or?
Yeah, I was.
Okay, cause we were wanting to try to get those signed, like, when can we get those signed then?
Well.
We're gonna have to wait for.
I, I didn't get these till Friday, late afternoon.
And I sent you the Word document today.
And I gave, I got it to my secretary at four thirty.
That's okay. What have you been doing?
So we're about three, three pages out of the页. And I put it back together, it's one doc.
Okay, that's, that's.
I don't really care, I, but I saw it, but, and I changed the order so we didn't, sort of went sequential.
And one thing I'll say, you brought up the, the rental of the facility versus the payment of utilities and things like that. Um, you know, in a hierarchy of, of things, the, the rent and the use of the building is, is fairly low compared to the town, uh, paying for utilities, uh, you know, of the building. So, um, that's a consistent cost and it, it may end up being, like you said, it may, you may rent it out quite a bit and it may cover itself expense-wise, um, or at least, uh, cover half a portion of that, so.
And you could have in the lease a provision that says, we're gonna pay the, the, it, it's sort of one where you give it with one hand and you take it away with the other. It says, we're gonna pay the utilities, but oh, by the way, this provision may be not, this provision is not enforceable on future, uh.
So where does that figure in with, did we have something that we would revisit it, look it over like every five years? So does that help that at all or it's still?
Well, you really need it from year to year, cause you, you don't budget for five years.
Okay, okay, that's fine.
Yeah.
And so if some reason the budgeting go through the, the board, or the, decides not to fund for the utilities, then the building use is pretty much non-existent, it's not habitable. And then someone else picks up the tab for utilities.
Well, and there, there's, the other thing is, to the extent it's being used by other people, that's gonna, that's, and it's generating income and that, that's where, you know. Uh, and I don't know how much, and I don't know whether you would separately meter, cause part of the building really wouldn't even be used at all by, uh, by the bridge, right? The concession stand.
The concession and then the, the existing block building, bachelor building.
Yeah.
They'll be fed separately, have their separate heaters.
Okay.
So, right. And the, did anyone have any questions on the electrical portion? I know Jerry and.
I, I, the only thing I didn't understand is that, was that thirty thousand or sixty, we had thirty twice.
Thirty thousand is the approximate, uh, cost that we got for the electrician to do the inside of the bridge.
Okay.
And the concession, just to, to wire that, lights, electrical, things like that. The additional twenty-five, thirty thousand was from Duke to drop a, uh, a new service line from the pole near the Fiberhawk Building.
Yes, Fiberhawk, yeah.
Run it, we would have to, that includes the cost of running it underground. Putting a transformer next to the building. Right now, all of the electrical comes in overhead to that little block building. There's, I don't know, just a bird's nest full of wires. It would take all that underground, run the service up into the building and then run it back to the pole, uh, for the three service drops for, uh, Kirk's Crossing. And, uh, cause I know Kirk's Crossing, every year there's, there's always some, you know, on the fly, like, electrical work being done because there's not enough juice in the building. So it would provide the three hundred for the Kirk's Crossing. And I'd leave a hundred for the block building, two hundred and two hundred, yeah, that's eight hundred, so eight hundred amps. The problem is the distribution panels, uh, are pretty pricey. I mean, we're trying to find one that's used. And so the, the totals up with the, the trenching, the, the Duke costs and the materials, the transformer and everything.
So it's, so it's really is sixty, thirty of which you were always figuring.
We, we thought thirty-four of the building, but then when we started adding up and realizing there's not the power to run just the bridge and the concession stand there. But a lot of the block building and, so if you could have it, which I, I don't think the town would want that if this project goes through where, oh, Kirk's Crossing is coming up, but we just shut the building off and run Kirk's Crossing outside, I mean, that's.
I was thinking about that too, after, uh, we had our talk, uh, that line that goes to that first pole, is there a, is there a box on that pole that separates some other poles? Or is it just one line feeds three, three different plugs out there for, for our vendors? Because that's something that we, as a board, should look at, is updating poles because eventually we're gonna have more vendors out there. So that needs to be in the equation so we don't run back into the same thing. And we need to have more plugs out there for, for more traders and vendors in the future, cause it is gonna grow.
Not only is it growing, but their, their power needs are changing.
The power needs are changing, so there's a lot more in the picture too besides the bridge. We need to think about part two so we don't have to address this again in two years.
Right, eight hundred would just service what you have now without things blowing during that. But if you're gonna increase it, there may be a different solution or another solution as well. Maybe running six hundred to this and running a separate line back there for.
Right, it could be just as much as getting another panel box amped up with the power out there and not running new lines yet, not, not that cost, but having that first pole ready to take on if we need to expand different locations with, with plugins for concessions and stuff out in the future.
With that deciding if you're charging the person coming in, the trailer coming in, because a lot of them now come with their generators too. So how's that work? Cause if we're providing the electricity, hopefully it would be at a higher rental fee for them.
Yeah, I, you know, though, a lot of them, yeah, they use their own generator, but, uh, the convenience of plugging in is a lot easier.
Sure.
You know, you got some that are sticklers and use your generator.
We had some on Saturday's event that used electrical and they had to have two one-tens. So we had to plug them into two different locations because one plugin wasn't working.
Bone, bone breakers.
So.
But out there, I know we only got a few plugins and there's a lot of cords that go to one plugin and that's a, that's a big no-no too out there, so. I'm just saying, if we, if we're gonna go, if we had to decide to go with the electrical, us as Kirkland need to think about how we're gonna upgrade that first run to, for future. So we want to get the right line to that pole.
Possibly.
That has nothing to do with you guys.
Right, so you could possibly, we could hang it back and run it in the same trench and then lie off. And you have a transformer, we have a transformer, take it from there.
Okay.
That's all part of the, it'd be cheaper to do it now than later.
Right.
And again, that problem, that isn't a, a, I mean, in other words, you can, you can agree to pay that expense now. You just need to put it in your budget for this coming budget or appropriate.
For next year, yeah.
Yeah. It's, it's when you're making promises of what you're gonna do for twenty years.
What about the construction part of it? We want two different agreements, correct? Construction, because once construction's over, then we're done with that.
He just mentioned that he's trying to recombine those, we, we had originally had it combined.
I mean, I can break it out again, I, I always will have a problem with that, except for, see, they, they flow naturally from one end to the other, you know.
There's someone interconnected.
Sure, we just didn't know if it was gonna be two months or later, if you're like, okay, these first five pages doesn't apply anymore cause it is constructed, but if it's best to leave it together. What do you think on timeline for us to be able to be ready to move forward with it, with it sound legally?
Well, I mean, I think I can.
Do we have to have more meetings before we can sign, so we can get going on funding?
That's what, one of the questions I had is, when I read this, it, it had that, that it had to be done no later than Kirk's Crossing. And I was wondering whether you really meant that it wasn't supposed, the, the construction wasn't supposed to start before Kirk's Crossing, which is it? Were you planning on doing?
Well, I think it was to start after Kirk's Crossing.
This year.
This year.
Cause it said, no later than.
Right, yeah, so, so that should be changed then. The construction would be such that it would not interfere with Kirk's Crossing.
Yes.
So now, can, now, now we could push it to before Kirk's Crossing, huh?
But just such that it does not interfere with, you're right.
That really could be taken out at this point, we could really take that statement out.
We just wanted, we just wanted everyone to know that we're not gonna have the place torn up during Kirk's Crossing.
Yeah.
If we didn't have to, so.
And I, it has a provision in there about, it's always available during that Kirk's Crossing time period.
That's in there.
Yeah.
Sherry, what were your thoughts on?
My thing is just, we, we need to, and I know we've all been working towards it, but get it down and get those signatures so we can start more with the fundraising. So.
We do have the, uh, the proposal and I don't know if we've signed that and sent it back yet, but with KJG out of West Lafayette, they're gonna be the design architects and do the drawings and states and middles and, uh, probably Kimley Horn for site civil word layout, um, just to make sure all that's good, um, that's. probably Kimley Horn for site civil word layout, just to make sure all that's good, from that standpoint. And we assume site pad prep, we had a demo of the building, of course, and all that adds up with the construction costs. Site work and the plans and permits, we're kind of at two sixty. Roughly, that includes the thirty thousand dollars for the upgraded electrical service. So, we could be, basically the shell itself is about two hundred, two ten.
You got any leeway in there for scenes, since there was an old building in that one, in that area?
Of the type of building, the pole arm is.
Get through the pole?
Yeah.
Get through the pole?
As long as we get through it, it should be okay.
Get the pole.
They are gonna use the concrete posts, so it won't have no wood going below grade like the building is now, where you can just take a screwdriver through the posts, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, we build the last, it'll last for years to come, yeah. So, Jay, what are your thoughts on?
I think.
We have to wait till next meeting?
I mean, you could call it special meeting too.
Would you just let us know like when you have stuff ready then, and then we can?
I'll have stuff ready by the end of the week.
Okay.
Yeah, Jerry said our primary, our primary goal is to, when we nail these numbers down, is to go fundraise and know that we have the okay. We can't do that until we have the okay, and so.
Yeah, we can't ask for money until we have signatures, so.
So, what we're gonna do is, the signings for the thirty thousand?
No, we're not talking about that money, we have to have, we want to, the bridge wants to have a document signed saying that the council is in favor of the construction and the lease for the bridge.
Yeah.
Yes, before we go and ask for fundraising, so.
You know, before you had like the bridge requests the town to consider funding the additional cost of electrical upgrades. Is it possible to put a, make that a pretty firm number? I would think that would be better for the town to, you know, in other words, it.
So, say upgrades of thirty thousand or upgrades of, is that?
Yeah, because we had, we were in discussions with Duke and when they came back and actually we thought they're gonna raise their price, actually dropped it a little bit. And part of that cost is that distribution panel, so if we find one used, that's gonna be, so we could have a.
I like it, not to exceed.
Right, not to exceed number.
Is, what would, I got a blank right here now.
Is that thirty thousand or maybe two sixty?
Yeah, I don't think it would exceed thirty.
Thirty thousand.
Thirty, no, thirty two.
I mean, hopefully, it's closer to twenty-five.
I'd rather have that not exceed thirty, just to have that cushion there, just to.
Like I said, it's not a, necessarily a hurdle we can't jump over, it's just gonna take longer to accomplish that, so.
But yeah, we were looking at probably twenty, I don't know what the going rate is now on percent that's gonna add to, because it's always higher than you.
If I, if Jay would let me know the documents are ready and if I would be able to call special meeting, if I only had like three people, what I think I could get maybe three people to come and sign the documents or probably, like if it was Monday to Wednesday or something, or anywhere in there, okay. I think I could get enough people to just sign it, so, at least I can have a horn. So, yeah, we'll see what we can do on that to try to, so you can start fundraising also. We want, also want to get back with our architect too, because they were holding for them too, we gotta let them know, yes, so. All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Jay.
We want to reallocate the, right now you have the meeting and, and sort of an agreement to agree on how you would use the rental payments.
Yeah.
We wanna, I mean, we could say the rental payments shall be applied first to payment of all utility expenses, second to other things that were going to be city expenses or account expenses.
The reason why I wanted like maybe the rent to come through the town is because it's a town building and Carla has a calendar on the website and you can look to see if it's available. And then you can rent it, you have to pay tax, so if they pay it up here, they can get a receipt for the payment here. And no one has to meet them, they can pay it up here at the town hall.
Where they pay it, doesn't it mean?
I think he's talking about.
I'm talking about where who gets it.
Right, use the rental money to pay the utilities.
Just get paid to the town, so the town would get the funding.
He's saying how to allocate the rental money, like first goes to pay the utilities that the towns are paying, and then the extra would go into what, the parks, parks fund or the building fund or something like that.
I'm just saying, it goes to the town already, so that's how the town will allocate it, but it would just go to the town.
But he's asking if that's something that you want.
Because now you have it, say, well, we're gonna get together every, after five years, because right now, for the first five years, all the rental comes to, to the bridge the way you have.
I thought we had.
We have changed that in the meeting, I don't know if it's still on there.
Do we have it to the bridge or to the town?
To the town. Rental, rental income.
I don't know what it said.
The document that you sent him should be to the town.
Well, this changed.
Maybe we're setting.
Yeah, I'm sorry. After all of the meetings and everything, I just said, let's just divide this. If the town's gonna pay utilities, you get all the rent from the building. That was our thinking.
Okay, so what I'll do is I'll make it so all the rental income comes to the town and the town will, that it is, the town will appropriate that to be used for rental purposes. For, for, excuse me, for paying utilities.
Or expenses?
And other expenses.
I mean, there's.
Yeah.
I think all the rent that comes from that building should be set somewhere to go back in that building, if it ever has to.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, utilities first, and then whatever's in the pile, something happens, you know, we got something to maintain it or whatnot, and it doesn't go somewhere else.
Well, and then we were thinking too that you guys will be in charge of keeping the restrooms stocked and cleaned and, you know, like that just the same as. But that would be so much easier than us trying to go, well, we used it two times, so we owe you three rolls of toilet paper and like.
I think it's just different wording, I can see where he would think, but it's.
Well, and that's what we were originally thinking too, so.
Yeah, but it's, it's supposed to be, it's just everything's supposed to go to the town because they're scheduling it, so.
So, who's gonna be paying for cleaning the building?
Well, I mean, we'll clean it before and after our activities. If there's rental income, like for a reception or something like that, and they leave it all dirty.
That's what.
That would be like reading this out, like a bound.
We could do the same thing we do here, it's like you have like a checklist that you get and you have to leave it the way you found it, so like if you, there's, you have to do the trash, clean the windows, empty the trash in the restrooms. So, there's a checklist, like you have to do the same thing there in that same building.
And even, right, and even like here, maybe we, even like here, we should maybe look into something. This is what it costs to rent the building, but we should also have a different cleaning deposit that they come back and get, because so many times they leave and they don't clean stuff, this way.
Or, or, if they pay by credit card, you've got their credit card number, you just charge them.
Well, right, we still should have a deposit, we have a cleaning, we have a cleaning service.
We have a damage deposit, that all falls under the same thing.
Yeah.
And they get that back, so.
If they don't, if they don't comply, then we can keep it.
You can use it for both.
Yes, so. We can do the same thing over there. And if you're worried about utilities at the park, at the new building, we can put locks on the thermostats. There's ways around that, if you're worried someone's gonna leave doors open or turn the air up and heat up and down, you can put locks on thermostats to control that.
Well, the other thing you could do is, is if it's, if it's the town's building, which it is, and let's say the bridge is there sixty percent of the time, seventy percent of the time, is then you would allocate the utilities sixty percent, you know, based on usage. So, we could change the utilities that the bridge will pay its proportionate share of the utilities.
Percentage of time, how do you calculate that? Based on twenty-four hour day, we'll take that.
Twenty.
No, I mean, getting tougher all the time, no, if, per month, if we use it for twelve hours or fifteen hours, that's a pretty small percentage of the number of hours in a month. So, I think we'd be okay with that, but if you say, well, it was rented three times and you guys use it four times, you pay sixty percent of the utilities,
Yeah.
I'm not on board with that.
Well, and you'll have to think too of what you're charging for the rental, because if it was rented three times, but it was to four H and whatever, that, something you don't charge for, so, but that stuff you guys would have to decide just as you do here, you know, how often do you give out free?
Something we don't charge for, do you mean you do that as a deduction? Not like I like every year.
You don't pay tax, you don't need deductions.
I'm learning.
Yeah.
But, you know how people give donations or whatever, that doesn't work with the town.
Well, if you make a donation to the town, that can be a tax deduction for the person who's making the donation.
Well, if you donate use of the facility, that has, town does nothing, the town can, nothing.
I mean, town's not paying taxes. So, yeah, that doesn't help the town, other than, you know, it's good for the community.
Okay. Our, the only thing else on this, Jayden, or?
I think they're free.
Okay. Anybody else, can I move on? Okay, did you have something, Jerry, or?
No.
Okay, I'm gonna move on and some of our next few items, like the park, Billy's not here, I don't think we have anything else to discuss on the park. Dave or Sher, are you guys done, or you guys okay, okay?
Thank you.
And we have stormwater on here.
I almost skipped that one.
The only, the only thing I was gonna mention to everyone, I talked to, I got an email from Amy, our grant administrator, and I'm gonna take a call with her on Thursday with Jerry White. And I think it's gonna be at like one o'clock on Thursday. So, she told me, I can't find my document that I wanted right now, isn't that crazy? She said they did not give out, they did not give out any grants for stormwater. They only gave them to certain things. So, this didn't surprise her that we didn't get one, so, here it is. Oakboro didn't fund any infrastructure projects, they only funded two comprehensive plans and that was it. So, Jerry White is gonna follow with Amy and I on Thursday at one. So, I'll see if I can get any additional information or thoughts from him to help with future projects, so. And I can let you guys know next meeting, maybe, what they suggest, so. But that's all I'm gonna say on stormwater then.
Did anybody meet with Dan Sheets this past week?
I didn't. Did you?
Neither.
We can't, you can't find your hardware, can you? Okay.
No. And they were supposed to get back with Billy on the cameras and that, I've not heard nothing yet on that, so.
And then he's gone?
Yeah.
On vacation, so we don't have an update on that?
I didn't know if Drew even went over and met with him.
Oh, we have a permit to attach into that county drain from Dan Sheets right there, mountain drill.
Pretty much plugged to it.
It's an eight inch drain, it's four inches plugged. But during the heaviest rainstorm, I was over there and where that drain inlet is across the street, it took, it was taking everything that that rank gave. So, the four inches is, I would say it's probably not four, but the drain is still taking a lot of capacity of water, so. As far as their problem, it'll take care of now at, what's the name of the apartments? That's the one that we, that's what we're gonna have to get addressed of them, somebody in there jetting that out to county to get that to work properly.
And that is a county ditch.
Yes, and it's, and them drains are ran to that county drain, I'm pretty sure.
Okay.
I'll try to remember to go over and find out when the next drainage board being is, because it's, it's a certain day of the.
Right.
Of the month each.
Okay, and just let us know, let someone know.
I wanna go, I know if Mindy can go, she'll go.
Okay.
There's multiple problems around, as everybody's aware of, and nobody wants to accept responsibility for it.
And then that went out by your place, be a good thing to.
Oh, that's not worse, but they're in front of your house, that, the state highway, they want to talk about it.
Yeah.
When a truck hits a bump on US four twenty-one and it knocks knickknacks off your shelf in your house, there's an issue.
It sounds like a cave through my house.
Yeah.
But they're supposed to be coming through and doing that four twenty-one project, so I hope that takes care of it then.
The way I understand Billy to say, the town's responsible for that and we don't have the money.
Just our own storm drains, the main drains are the county, are the states, so they have to take care of those, but anything that crosses, it's ours.
We have to do it.
Yeah, he's saying we might have issues with that. I understand you.
Where that, where that problem is, next block out, according to them, there's no drain there.
Yeah, there is, because it's caving in my yard and stuff, so that'll get adjusted.
Well, that's over on your side, but this is on the east side of the road, that's the one that causes all the problems. But according to, when I talked to the boys in the state, was out there, and they said there's no drain there. Well, I know there is.
Yeah, we're about to find out.
I hope so, I hope so.
Continuing on, I did check with Billy and he did not leave a report tonight, he said he's gonna do an extra long report next month. But he didn't have anything major before he left, so he's gonna follow up with us when he comes back. Yeah, next month.
One question for you.
Yes.
They were excavating over here, all the stuff was marked Saturday, and they hit the main over here.
Drew told me.
So, do we charge for that to the people that hit it? Because if I'm in town and in Frankfurt and I'm doing a dig and I hit a main and I can be held liable for that, do we do the same thing here? I'm just wondering.
If they called locate sand and they hit something where there wasn't a locate, I didn't know, I didn't know the contractor, yeah.
So, then we could follow up with Billy to verify that.
I just didn't know how that went.
Yeah. Our next item is Brendan.
Thank you. I'll start off with our monthly statistics, our activity, we had eighteen calls for service. We had three ordinance violation warnings issued, fourteen traffic stops, and out of that, we had two infractions, one misdemeanor arrest and thirteen warrants. Update on vehicles, they're both running okay, no issues with that, I think I had a Ford Mustang, it's got a cracked spot, I think. Still my agenda to get fixed. I attended training in Boswell, Indiana, and it was just for martial training, I've done this before, it's about the third time. Just a one-day training, it's really good, just to get all the local town marshals around to throw ideas off everybody, so. I did that in September. And the last item of business I have is, I wanna introduce everybody to Jay Rosin, I've known him for probably fifteen years, and I'd like to give Mindy his application and resume and stuff, but I'd like to hire him as our fifth, fourth deputy marshal, we've been three, it's up to five, we've had that before in the past, we've had that open spot. We're doing okay on the hours, but, you know, like this week, for example, we had fall breaks, it was a little short, so. I'll let Jay tell you about himself briefly here, but he's got a lot of law enforcement experience, started in nineteen twenty-five. I'll let him tell you a little bit about himself there, and then I'd like permission to hire him as a part-time deputy town marshal.
Well, good evening, my name is.
Well, good evening. My name is Jay Rosin. I worked at the Lafayette Police Department for almost twenty-six years. I got hired on with the Lafayette Police Department in November the eighth of nineteen ninety-five. Um, I worked at different departments and held different positions at the Lafayette Police Department. I started out as a patrolman, graduated the basic training at the Indiana Law Enforcement Academy. I was part of the ninety-six dash one twenty-five group. Um, I was a patrolman from ninety-five till two thousand one. I obtained the rank of detective. I worked in our special victims unit. I handled a lot of cases where it was crimes against children, things like abusive head trauma, we investigated child deaths, child death scenes. Um, I also worked in our white collar crime division and I did, uh, we called it our criminal, uh, division back then. But I, I did some of the white collar crime, I did bank robberies. I became a sergeant in two thousand seven, went back to patrol and ran patrol shifts on the night, uh, night shift, then I moved back to day shift. Um, in two thousand fifteen, I went back to our detective division. I was a sergeant in our detective division and held the special victims unit again. And twenty sixteen, I got appointed to the rank of lieutenant and went back to patrol, worked the night shift till two thousand eighteen. Then went back to our detective division again and worked till twenty twenty-one and I retired with, like I said, almost twenty-six years of that experience. And I still, I work with the city of Lafayette. I'm in the engineers department. I do code enforcement. It's my understanding that you guys have some code enforcement that you do here. You may be asking yourself, you know, why, why do I wanna get back into law enforcement? The truth is, I, I really miss it. Um, my wife and I, we do live in the town of Kirkland. We live three-quarter mile away from the Clinton County to the New County line. We love hookers. We also visited the traveler's facility and went through, uh, their, well, they're over there with the old elevator and went through, uh, we did a tour of that. A little bit about myself, other than being a police officer. I'm actually from a small town, Wabash, Indiana. I grew up on a farm. My wife, on the other hand, we met at a booth. She was born in Brooklyn, New York, and when we go visit the grandparents, we go to Wabash County. When I go visit her grandparents, we go to Brooklyn, New York, so. Yeah, anyway, Lafayette, we had a lot of things going on. We survived the George Floyd riots and just thought it was time to get out. Wanted to take a break and I, I do miss law enforcement. I, I would like to work in a smaller town and, and I do have a passion for helping people. I spent almost now thirty years in subtle service, working for the city of Lafayette. And, you know, some of my experiences as far as with the job, when I say the job, the police, the police job. I've went to Northwestern University and attended their supervision school for frontline supervisors. I went down to the Southern Police Institute, University of Louisville, and I went to investigate, being, being a lead investigator on homicides. And then also I went to the FBI academy in twenty eighteen and was in Chronicle, Virginia, spent, I believe it was ten weeks out there. I was a class of two seventy-three and graduated and came back and, and then worked until twenty twenty-one, so. But I'll entertain any questions, but I'm, I'm happy to be here and I thank you for your time.
Okay.
Do you folks have any questions?
Sound like you'd be an asset for us.
You don't have any questions though. Everything sounds great.
All right, well, like I said, I like this town and, and I, I wanna get back into law enforcement. I wanna work with my friend Brendan here and we go to church together, so.
I'll talk to the guys. They know, nobody's getting replaced, it's just, you know.
Just extra help.
Just extra help and make sure we get coverage and we've done it with four of us out here, but five's always nice to cover.
Nice.
What's that?
Night.
He would be evenings too, like I would be, because he works during the day, so. Not replacing anybody, just kinda making sure we get things covered and we, we talked, I've been for a couple of years now, so, ever since he retired, so.
If there's no other questions or comments, does anyone entertain a motion or anything, or you got a question?
Before we go any further, Jay, an extra guy would probably be good, and I may be well based on this, but anytime we have an open public meeting, shouldn't we have a sergeant-at-arms here? Oh, you don't have to. You don't have to? No. Okay. Well, I didn't know. I just spoke with Brendan about that earlier. And a lot of times there's a meeting here, an open public meeting, and the police department don't even know about it. We nev, we never have a police presence unless we think there's gonna be a problem at, at area plan or and I don't think, I'll ask Alicia, but I don't think Mulberry has police presence at their meetings.
Okay.
And for years we, well, you would usually have like, like Brendan, like.
Because he gives a report.
The city, the city of Frankfurt would have the chief there usually, but, but not, I mean, so yes, you did have an officer there, but it wasn't, uh, required. He was there because of his position and his report he was giving, not, uh, you know, obviously he's there if there is a problem, but.
Yeah.
I just assumed that you gotta have a clerk, you gotta have a quorum, and I just assumed that you had to have a sergeant-at-arms.
Well, we don't have to then, okay.
No, you know.
Okay. Anything else, or?
No. Thank you.
You guys wanna vote or do, do you need to vote or?
I'll make a motion to hire him.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion to hire Jay Rosin and a second from Brent. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries.
Welcome to Kirkland.
Thank you.
The rifle, has anybody getting trained on that?
Trying to, it's, yeah. Got in the works for, trying to get done the fall foreheads before.
Okay. Okay, we're gonna finish up with our clerk pressure items. We have our revenue appropriations and our reconciliation documents that Carla's gonna pass down for us to sign. So we have all of those signed and our last two things under the clerk is, um, Carla had prepared two adjustments for Kurt Foster and Jamie Pitzer.
Yes, so they both have leaks. Kurt Foster had a leak while he was on vacation, so it's quite hard. Two hundred, uh, two hundred forty-one and eleven cents. And for Jamie, twenty-one, uh, forty-five, just some water, boiled them because we were on, um, springing rates.
Okay.
All them problems been addressed?
Yeah, they, yeah, they've been fixed, correct? Probably, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, I make a motion that we approve these leak adjustments.
A second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries.
Sorry, all of you.
Huh?
All of you, okay, thank you.
Yeah, all, all of it in favor, yeah. Sorry, Carla. And I don't have anything else tonight.
No, just.
Walt might have one thing, but I'm not sure what he wanted to say. What were you gonna say?
Well, basically, I, I think that Tara oughta write out a copy of the agenda to give to everyone at the meeting. Just the agenda, nothing else.
Well, she does have copies up here on the counter.
Okay, well, I mean for us to.
Okay, well, we can ask her that.
You know, that would.
Okay. And if that's it, we're gonna call the meeting. It's over, we're done.
Thank you, everybody.
Alright, I see.
Ready to go to the feast of boards Christmas thing?
Uh, no, I'm one to.
I also.
Christmas.
Fishers.
Fishers.
Yep.
Ain't no fisher, Ben.
Oh, great.
That's a good answer.
Yeah.